Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the 2021 Meet the Candidates Forum for the Camden R3 School Board for the election to be held on Tuesday, April 6. This joint forum is the result of a collaborative effort by the Camdenson Chamber, the Lake Area Chamber of Commerce, and is presented by Lake TV. We welcome all the viewers who are joining us either online or live on Lake TV, and we'd like to take this opportunity to introduce tonight's facilitator, Lou Hagadorn. Lou Hagadorn is a lifelong Lake resident and a 1998 graduate from Camdenson R3. Luke's parents, Dan and Sharon Hagadorn, were decades-long employees of the district, with Mr. Hagadorn serving as head of the Guidance Department and Mrs. Hagadorn as the health teacher. Both of Luke's sisters, Wendy and Suzanne, were also K-12 students at Camdenson, along with four of his nephews. Luke currently sits on the Board of Directors for the Lake Area Chamber of Commerce, serving as the Legislative Committee Chair. Thank you, Luke, for your time and support for this evening, and I'll pass it over to you.
Thank you, Casey. On behalf of the Lake TV, both Chambers of Commerce, and all voters in the Camdenson R3 School District, we thank you for your attendance this evening and participation, and looking forward to getting to know each of you a bit better and learn your thoughts on the school district. Five candidates have filed for the two seats on the school board that open annually. We are pleased to have all five candidates join us this evening. Those candidates are Laura Davis, Gail Griswold, Brian Butts, Diane S. Peck, and Paula Brown. Before we get started, we have a few ground rules to cover. We ask all those in the room to please turn off your cellphones to either silent or off, and remain seated during the entire session to avoid disruption of the broadcast. Each candidate will be allowed two minutes for opening and closing statements. We put out a call to the community for pertinent questions regarding this particular election. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to the selected questions. The questions have not been shared with the candidates in advance of this forum. We have a timekeeper and a clock up front. Once the question is complete and the response begins, the clock will start. Please be aware of your time, or I will be obliged to make you aware. If there are no other comments or questions, we will start with our opening comments. Again, each candidate will have two minutes. And as determined by a random draw by a former Camdenson student, Lauren Gailey, our first speaker will be Mr. Brian Butts.
Hi, everybody again. I gave an absolutely spot-on opening statement the first time. So disclaimer, if I'm a little off this time, it's not my fault. I'll try and remember the high points. Basically, what everyone needs to know about me is, again, I'm not a politician. I'm not polished. I don't practice my answers. I don't tell people what they want to hear. I have no problem telling people things that they don't like if it's, if it needs to be told. I am a lifelong resident of Lake of the Ozarks. We are currently raising fourth-generation Lakers. My son and my daughter are both in middle school, and they are fifth-generation Camden County residents. I am extremely proud of that. I'm extremely proud that they are Lakers. I love this community. I love this school. I love the teachers and the staff of this school. And for me to want to come out and run for school board takes a lot, because I spent the first part of my life as, in the political game, as my grandfather was a state representative, and so I'm very familiar with politics and don't particularly like them. So for me to do this should tell you that something really, really needs to get better. The school is capable of so much more than what we are getting right now, and we need to get it back to where it can be.
Thank you, Brian. Our next speaker with a two-minute opening statement will be Paula Brown.
I'm Paula Brown, and I am a mother with three children that graduated from Camdenson High School that were Lakers and went on to universities and are in professional careers now. I'm an educator. I was an art teacher, a counselor and administrator, 36 years at Camdenson, and then went on to teach at the university level at MSU and William Woods University. I have five degrees. My last one was a doctorate in educational leadership and policy analysis. However, that's not, the degrees aren't what's important. What's important about me is that I am a leader, I'm a collaborator, I'm a team builder, and I work to promote teachers and students and to make sure that they exceed at the highest level. As a school board member, what I want most is to create a positive foundation that is united and that can collaborate and work together and create confidence in our teachers and our students, that as they graduate and as they go through the process of learning and graduate from Camdenson High School, that they can walk out of our doors and feel the confidence to be equal to anybody coming from any other school across the state or the nation. And that's the most important thing that we can give them. And so, being a school board member, what I want to do is open communication, work on that communication, work on collaboration, and working as a united front, as a firm, positive foundation in our school board. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Our next speaker, next candidate, will be Gail Griswold.
Hello, I am Gail Griswold. I am a local business owner, a devoted wife, and a mother of three young boys. When I invested into the Lake area, my husband and I decided to move into the Camdenson School District. We specifically chose it, it was about five years ago, over all the other areas for different reasons. We loved the school when we first started. We, you know, like every lot of busy working parents, we dropped our kids off, our teachers were great, they were, you know, they were, they were doing well. And then, you know, in the last year or two, I really noticed that the school and, you know, their outreach to the community, a lot of us new parents really weren't brought into the fold. So I started to show up to school board meetings, and I was very concerned. Last year, at this time, a student advisor who actually has an advisory role, it's their, you know, their capacity to put things on the agenda, and she wasn't allowed to, they didn't allow her to have her item on the agenda. And that really concerned me. So after all the different issues with the debt and the scores and all the things that I see with the school, and it has so much potential, I decided to sign up for school board. I think there's a lot of great things going on in Camdenson. We are a great hub for the lake, and I want a good foundation, not only for my children, but for all children coming out of Camdenson. And I also want our community to be proud of Camdenson. And, you know, we get doctors and different people that want to work at our local hospital, and we want them to know that we have good school districts here, and we want them to feel like they can bring their children here. And so, I mean, just as a local business owner, somebody who's invested here, I just really want to see Camdenson succeed. So thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Our next speaker will be Laura Davis.
Hi, I'm Laura Davis. I'm so happy that I moved here, and my family moved here to the lake about, well, 17 years ago, almost exactly, because I've had a great job at Lake Regional Hospital as a speech pathologist for the last 17 years. And also, I've gotten to see all of the opportunities that Camdenson students have within our district. And I really got a view that through the lens of my daughter, who attended Camdenson Schools all 13 years of her K-12 education. She was, she participated in things such as music arts and academic programs that really pushed her to a level that honestly, you might not see until you get to a graduate school level at a university, and that's pretty outstanding. And not only that, she got those aha moments that really pushed her to be a lifelong learner and taught her and teaches so many students that there's not anything they can accomplish if they don't put their, if they can put their mind to it. But I didn't run for a seat on the board, and I'm not on the board because of any certain group or any program. I've always sat on the board to make sure that I'm working for the betterment of all students. And sometimes the decisions that you make are not popular, and I don't make decisions for them to be popular. The other thing is, a couple of weeks ago, I put a post out saying that I am fiscally conservative, and by that I mean, my family has no debt. And I only say that because I bring that exact mentality to the boardroom every day, that level of discipline. I use that level of discipline in working on the budget and anything else I work on. And I see that, and I have seen that with all the boards I've worked on in the last six years, as well as with the superintendent. So basically, we are managing tax dollars well. And what I've really enjoyed on these years on the board is watching the love and the work that goes into managing the budget and making sure that every kid is learning every day.
Thank you, Laura. And our final speak, our final candidate to speak for the opening comments would be Diane S. Peck. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. I'm Diane S. Peck, and first of all, I'd like to make a comment that I read all your responses in the paper, and I was just struck by how much knowledge, skills, and y'all seem very competent to be on the board. When considering my opening comments, it was difficult for me to decide what to talk about, because it's really not about me. It's about the children in this community, and the teachers and the parents of the children. But I realize that if voters are going to vote for somebody in the school board, they have a right to know who the person is and what they're about and what their knowledge and skills are. So I'm a registered nurse. I'm a regional operations director for Americare. We have assisted living and skilled care across Missouri and actually in other states. I'm in charge of all operations, clinical and regulatory compliance for 13 to 18 buildings from Jefferson City all the way through Springfield. I am responsible for a budget in excess of $15 million, and I have been able to have a posit EBITDA through the COVID epidemic, which is astounding, because it's hit our industry hard. I teach leadership principles to administrators, directors of nursing, and frontline staff to achieve our goals. I don't know if you're familiar with the Gallup Organization, but they have a lot of research, and they do, a team of scientists and a positive psychologist did an assessment form, so it kind of puts forth what your strengths are. So my talents that were identified are strategic. I anticipate alternative solutions, and I'm intuitive. Arranger, I'm a flexible organizer and efficient achiever. I have a strong work ethic, and I get results. Self-assurance, I have a strong inner compass that really drives everything I do. I'm futuristic, imaginative, and visionary, and relater, caring, trusting, and a relationship builder. I have no preconceived notions about what this is going to be, but I do believe I can bring some skills to help the school board.
Thank you, Diane. All right, we will now move on to the question and answer portion of the evening. As mentioned before, but for those who may have missed with the technical difficulties, we put out a call to the community for pertinent questions regarding this particular election. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to the selected questions. The questions have not been shared with the candidates in advance of this forum. We will work our way down the line, and each person will have an opportunity to speak first. We will start with Gail Griswold on the first question. Question number one. What, and if at any point you need me to repeat the question when it gets to you, feel free to ask. We will not start the time until the question is clear and you've begun your response. So, Gail, what are some strengths and weaknesses in our district? If elected, how would you work to highlight those strengths and address the areas of need?
So I think, I mean, obviously, there's many strengths. We have a great staff. We have teachers and support staff that I think, you know, really put a lot of hours into the school and to the students. And I think if we could support them more by reducing class sizes and giving our teachers more opportunity to focus on individual students, right now, our class sizes are way too big. And yesterday, I listened to a school, a teacher advocate, and she said one of the main problems is class sizes, and that was a big teacher feedback. So that is, I think our teachers are a strength, but our weakness is, is that we're overloading them, and that creates an environment, a stressful environment for the teachers and for the staff. And so I think, you know, not only do we have amazing teachers and staff, we need to have better class sizes. Sorry, my time's running out, I'm watching that clock. But I think that comes down with budget and managing so that we can reduce the class sizes and hire more teachers.
Thank you, Gail. Moving on to Laura Davis. What are some strengths and weaknesses in our school district? If elected, or re-elected, how would you work to highlight those strengths and address the areas of need?
The thing that I've been so, and the most impressed by in the last six years on the board, is that the teachers and administrators have worked so hard to get standards in place in every single classroom, in every single building, in every single subject across the district. And that work was not easy. I think it started in about 2015 and spanned till 2018, and it's really just been, it's really just now being solidified, so that teachers are solid on what they're doing, and they, you know, there's a curriculum process to make sure that they're doing well, that the tools are in place, that they're really making sure that no student falls through the cracks. And then, of course, working on communication is always a challenge. I think it's a two-way street. I think, you know, if you have a challenge, the first place you normally go is to the teacher and the building principals, but we've got to work it out on the other end, too, and that's part of our next five-year strategic plan, so I know we'll be working hard on that.
Thank you, Laura. Moving on to Paula Brown. Would you like me to repeat the question? What are some strengths and weaknesses in our district? If elected, how would you work to highlight those strengths and address the areas of need?
Well, Camdenson has many strengths that we've reiterated across the board here, but our teachers, our staff, our dedication to excellence, I think that's one of the main strengths that we have. Camdenson's a rarity in a small town. You know, we take in lots of different communities, but somehow, we're built, build the spirit. The challenge is, how do we communicate to all the parents, to all these towns, and make a collaborative effort to bring them together to where no one feels left out, and that we can empower the parents, the community, and our patrons, that they are a part of the school always, and feel that school spirit, and do not feel a negative towards it? That's always been a challenge in the last 40 years I've been here, and it's going to be a challenge. It's something we have to work on all the time and, and make it better. So I think that our strength is that we are, build towards excellence always. Our challenge is how do we empower our patrons and teachers and staff?
Thank you, Paula. Our next candidate will be Brian Butts. Would you like me to repeat the question?
Nah, it's all right.
Great.
I'm waiting on her to hit the button. Camdenson's strengths are enormous. It is a very, very unique area in that our community supports our children, it supports our school, it supports everything about it. This, our community is a family feel, and that is a huge strength that we're not utilizing outside the school. We need to get more community involvement. It pains me to admit any weaknesses, to be totally honest, but we do have a lot of problems. The top of the list, in my opinion, is the culture that has been created. Over the past few weeks, I've spoken to dozens of amazing teachers that are no longer with us. They often gave up thousands and thousands of dollars a year to go work at another district, and that's got to stop.
Thank you, Brian. And our final respondent to this question will be Diane S. Peck.
Thank you very much. Strengths and weaknesses, okay? Well, I've been in here at the lake and involved with the lake for 18 years. 15 years ago, I had two children that went to the lake school, okay? It was a very good experience. I had one of the, my girls was in the gifted program. She just blossomed. So, you know, I had a very positive experience. As far as the recent situation, the first thing I would do is really the SWOT analysis, the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. I think just new eyes to kind of see, I'm very open to what kind of concerns there are, what everybody said really interests me, but really, it's making an assessment first. As far as what we can do about that, I'm a very positive person. I have a lot of energy. I love to be part of a team that we can really make a difference. So that's what I would, what I would do.
Thank you, Diane. All right, moving on to our next question, submitted from members of our community. And we will start with Laura on this one. What role do the fine arts, applied arts, and technical arts play in the education of our students, in your opinion?
Fine arts, applied arts, and technical arts.
And you can take any part of that that you'd like to...
And when you say applied arts, you mean just the regular academic programs, or...
Yes.
Okay.
It's, it's...
I've been on the board, but...
Yeah, yeah, basically more, more practical, the practical kind of arts that actually apply to...
Okay.
...life and work.
So, and repeat that one more time, please.
What role do fine arts, applied arts, and technical arts each play in the education of our students?
Well, luckily, we're in a district where all of those things are taking place, and I had an interesting conversation with a, with a teacher in the district just today about how especially, well, fine arts really pays, plays a really big part, because we've got to make sure that our students are, when they're learning something, my understanding is that they learn something over a several-day period, and that's very well put into place with our instructional coaches, so that they can start to like really work on what they're learning, that it's not just, it's not, anywhere close to when I was in school, that you just learn something and regurgitate it. You learn it, you work on it, you, you, you get to understand it a little bit better, and then through the fine arts, that's a place where you can kind of let it synergize, because I think that's where the problem solving, even in the academic world, takes place. And then the technical arts, obviously, gosh, we've got, you know, the best LCTC technical school, and we bring students in from all over, and so those all work together to get our students out really working in the community and the larger world in the future.
Thank you, Laura. Moving on to Paula Brown. What role do the fine arts, applied arts, and technical arts play in the education of our students?
Well, they're all, they're all very needed and worthwhile and intermingle with each other. Our children at Camdenson become well-rounded citizens and have the opportunity to work in all of those areas and, and bring the knowledge that they have from them as a learning base. And I always told teachers when I worked with them, let's work on learning-based learning. And what that means is, is that you take knowledge that you have and you, the child applies it, works it, a problem, whether it's in the fine arts, the technical arts, or the applied arts, and then regurgitates it back, and they form a project, or they work that knowledge that they have into a learning experience. And so you can tie all three of them together, and what's interesting at Camdenson, they have excellence in all three categories, and they can graduate in all three categories and be successful.
Thank you, Paula. Yeah, I will, I will let you finish your thought on that. I just won't let you start a new one when the time, when the time runs out. So thank you, Paula. Moving on to Brian. What role do the fine arts, applied arts, and technical arts play in the education of our students?
One minute is not long enough to answer this question.
I'm fully aware, but...
The primary goal of any school should be to produce well-rounded young adults who have everything that they need to succeed in life. All those areas play a role in it. Fine arts are important because they, they open people's minds to new alternatives. They teach discipline, things that are very important in a day-to-day life. Applied arts, my definition of applied arts is living. That's what you do day-to-day, you know, the art, applying the art of doing well in life, that is, really needs no explanation, that needs to be focused on. And technical is important because it teaches details, attention to detail. I'm really running out of time, and I apologize. But yeah, all three are important, again, because we really want our kids to be well-rounded and successful in life.
Very good. Next will be Diane. What role do the fine arts, the applied arts, and technical arts play in the education of our students?
Well, it is a holistic view. I have to agree with what people have said up here, but, you know, you never know what's going to spark a child. One does not fit another. And to offer things that, you know, that they can use and be exposed to is very important. And I think that you do have to broaden their horizons, so you need to have all those areas available, and that they do, they are exposed to them. So that's what I would say, for a holistic, you know, experience, they have to be, have all three.
Thank you very much. And finally, on this question, Gail Griswold, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, thank you, I'm fine. I think it's important to understand that children all learn in different ways. So while some children might not succeed in a classroom for math or science, having an outlet, like going to the LCTC Learning Shop, also, my, my children play piano, and they don't really fight it, but you can tell that they're not super into it, but I just said, you know, piano is a building block, it's, it's really good for your brain, it's good for you to, to understand how music works, because it actually makes you a better learner in the long run. You don't have to keep playing, I don't care if you're a concert pianist, but I think it's important to expose children to all different types of learning, and I think that they can use it for whatever they do, and it's a really good foundation. Even somebody, like Diane said, made a good point, you never know, you know, they don't, might not know that they're interested in that. So when you expose them to all the different types of arts, I think it's a good opportunity for them to see something that they might not have been exposed to at home.
Thank you, Gail. Moving on to the next question, and our first responder will be Paula Brown. What do you believe the relationship between board members and the district administrator should look like?
Well, board members are your foundation and support. So you have to create a stable foundation for the rest of the district to feel like it's well, and that it can be successful and succeed. And so, the foundation and the school board has to be a positive unit that collaborates and works together and creates a system that the rest, that you work with administrators and the teachers, but you also create this positive unity. So, so the rest of our staff feels like they can be successful and be creative and take students to the next level. And students feel it, and teachers feel it, all the way to the core when there's any dissension. You have to work together. And I think, so with the school board, it would be a team that forms policies and work together to create that type of environment.
Thank you, Paula. Moving on to Brian. What do you believe the relationship between board members and the district administrator should look like?
The school board determines policy and sets goals. The administration's job is to enforce those policies and meet those goals. The board is the link between the community and the administration. That's why they're elected positions instead of appointed positions, because the, the community is who chooses who sits on the board. So the board will be their voice. They are the ones who should hear the concerns of the community, of the parents, of the teachers, and use those to determine policy and goals for the school that they set for the administration to make happen.
Thank you, Brian. Moving on to Diane. What do you believe the relationship between the board members and the district administrator should look like?
Well, any team needs to be collaborative. To make a collaborative team, you need to develop trust. From trust comes honest and open, I believe, feedback. I've always set up teams like that. I've always set up teams like that and it should always be values-based. If you can agree on values, then truly a team can be very strong and you can accomplish great things. But I think that that needs to happen. And that takes some time in relationship building, but it's very possible and that you can support each other.
Thank you. And finally, Gail. I guess, not finally, coming back to you, sorry. Almost finally, second to finally.
No problem.
What do you believe the relationship between the board members and the district administrator should look like?
So I, I kind of look at it as a business because that's my background. And I see the board, that's okay. I actually see the superintendent as more as, they're, they're hired by the board. So they're an employee. So, you know, with my managers, I have faith in them that they are going to manage well and, you know, they're going to perform and whatever goals we set, they're met. Now, when they're not met, then I hold my managers accountable. And I think their relationship with the board, while it should be a team structure with the superintendent, when things aren't, are going well and performance isn't well, our test scores are not performing on a national average and our debt is way, our debt is way more than anyone else regionally in our size of school. So I think as a board, that's when you step in, you say, you know, we need to reevaluate things and we need to revisit things and we hold the superintendent accountable.
Thank you Gail. And of course Laura, we will let you respond to that question as well. Laura, what do you believe the relationship between the board members and the district administrator should look like?
Yeah, I, I agree with Gail. Our role as a board is to hire the superintendent and then we hold him accountable with, he has specific goals that he works on every year and is actually kind of receives a grade from the board on how he's doing. I know we added one on professional development for teachers this year and we kind of collaborate on that. And he's always had a, a goal on the budget and actually is someone that takes that role very, very seriously, as well as just, just developing teachers and making sure the curriculum in the classroom is, is sound. And that's a big expectation for us. And then just that relationship as far as, we, we do receive a lot of guidance in return from, from him because he's the professional that has the education. And I, I don't have a degree in education, so I depend on him as kind of the sounding board so that we kind of know how, how we're going to work with educators within the district.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the next question and our first candidate to respond will be Brian Butts. Only the board as a whole can make decisions for the district. Could you support a board decision in which you did not vote in favor?
Definitely. Just because I don't agree with, if I'm the only dissenter for, as an example, and the other six members vote to proceed with something that I don't necessarily agree with, it doesn't matter what I think at that point. It's, it's a team effort, both the board as a team, the administration, which I believe the board is, is a part of, the teachers, the students, the staff. Once a policy is created or a decision is made, then that's what it is, you support it.
Thank you. Moving on to Diane. Diane, only the board as a whole can make decisions for the district. Could you support a board decision in which you did not vote in favor?
Yes, I could because I do believe that you, you shouldn't be a negative influence on organizations that you're part of. That's not who I am. I will tell you, I'm also not afraid to have the discussion while the decision's being made. They would, they would know how I felt and what I felt about it, but once the decision was made, then we have to be a group and we have to agree, sometimes to disagree and you just have to go with the majority, so.
Gail, only the board as a whole can make decisions for the district. Could you support a board decision which you did not vote in favor?
I think at the end of the day, when the board votes, the board votes. So as long as it was done per agenda, it was on the agenda and it was legally done with due process or whatever is needed, then yes, of course, we're a team, we're not always going to get along. Some things, sometimes things are rushed and you don't get a chance to fully understand it. So you might vote no, but in the end maybe, you know, might be fine with it in the end. So I would just encourage the board to have real discussion, listen to the other board members, have community involvement. I'd like to see more committees that the community can show up and be a part of. And I think that's where a lot of the things that are voted on kind of get lost in translation because the community has no idea what's going on. We show up to board meetings, we ask questions, they're not answered. I think one of my questions at a public comment was answered through a school reach. And so I just don't think that's appropriate. And I just think that, you know, we're a team. If I don't agree, that's fine, but I would just encourage the board to listen and make sure they have all the facts and all the community involvement and the staff involvement. Thank you.
And Laura. Only the board as a whole can make decisions for the district. Could you support a board decision in which you did not vote in favor?
Absolutely. I'm, I think our boards have worked very well together. The nice thing is well before we attend a board meeting, we have the agenda about a week in advance. So I spend hours and hours looking at, at the agenda, researching, reading all the reports from every single one of the building administrators. So I'm very well informed by the time I get to the meeting. So what's really nice is a lot of times when I've read, read through those hours and hours and done research on my own, I may end up with about five to 10 questions before I get to a meeting. And then what's, I, and in fact, I used to go, I went to about a year's worth of meetings before I was ever on the board and learned so much just by listening to what was happening in those meetings. The meetings I'm in now, if I have those questions almost all the time, I can sit and wait and listen to some of the administrators or the program managers talk about it and most of my questions are answered. So I don't usually have a lot to ask or offer because they've been answered before I vote. But yeah, I can support any decision the board makes, absolutely.
Paula Brown. Only the board as a whole can make decisions for the district. Could you support a board decision in which you did not vote in favor?
Yes, and I, as an administrator, I've written my reports for the board and, and I know that they go to the hands of the school board ahead of time and that they have time to look at them, they can ask questions. But if there was a decision that the team decided to vote in favor of and I couldn't, I think that I would have had time to research it ahead of time, understand it, be able to make an educated decision, but then also understand the other side of the coin to where I could support it. I'd always support the team.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the next question and Diane will be our first candidate to respond. In a normal school year, how could the district expand on parent and community involvement?
Well, that's a good question.
Thank you.
I bet, oh, that's a million dollar answer. You know, I think that you can be very creative in getting people involved, okay? In nursing, you know, and being an operations manager, you have to be pretty creative to get families involved sometimes, okay? And I think, to be honest with you, there's a simple concept about having some fun. I really don't do anything unless it's fun. And so I try to incorporate that into everything I do. Really, if people can be engaged by that they're going to come and they're going to have a good time and we're going to do something that's really worthwhile, I think you can capture them. And I've got a lot of energy to, to put towards with that.
Thank you Diane. Moving on to Gail Griswold. Gail, in a normal school year, how could the district expand on parent and community involvement?
I spoke to it earlier that I got complaints and it was something that I noticed, but I didn't, I thought it was just maybe me, that new parents that are coming in as kindergartners, you know, or new families coming into the area, they really didn't know what was, what opportunities they had. And so, and these were, some of them were stay-at-home moms, they're very active in their community, they, they're, you know, they, they do it all. And so I was surprised that they were having the same kind of feedback as I was. So I'd like to see maybe a better parent outreach. I know that there's a volunteer type of program, but I'm not familiar with that volunteer program really bringing in the parents. So that, you know, maybe something that could be expanded on. I also know that, like I said, there's committees and there's also maybe some principal or administrator time, like coffee with the principal where the parents can come and have a very relaxed conversation with the principals and ask, you know, those questions that maybe don't need to go to the board. So I think, I think welcoming them at the school in an environment that's casual would be good.
Thank you Gail. Laura, in a normal school year, how could the district expand on parent and community involvement?
Well, what's weirdly interesting is I think we've learned a lot through COVID. I think there, we're going to want people back in buildings. I think people will come back into buildings, maybe in a little safer manner, possibly not everybody in a building at one time. They may come in one classroom at a time so we know that we're keeping our students safe. And then teachers I know learned a lot even in, in, when they were meeting with parents. Doing that online, I think they'll be able to keep doing that online to really help busy, working parents when they really can't come meet face-to-face. So that's kind of exciting. The, the way teachers do reach out and interact with parents, I think is great. I know in the past we had, we've had some parent committees and parents come in to meet with people within the district to talk about district challenges. The thing is, a lot of those fizzled out over time because my understanding is, everybody was so happy with how things were going within the district. But if we need to get those going again, that's no problem at all. We just, you know, we want to do what we can for the parents and the community.
All right, Paula Brown. In a nor school, in a normal school year, how could the district expand on parent and community involvement?
Well, as an administrator at Camden Town, this is always a challenge. And what's interesting, you can get almost 100% of parent involvement at elementary. At middle school, it's like 70%. At high school, it drops almost to like 20% unless it's football. And so it is a challenge and it's something you have to work on all the time. I have talked about, I started principal coffees and that helped. Again, everyone came at first, then it dwindled down, but I think you have to reach out all the time. And I think every organization in your school that's doing something, have a parent night, show off the kids, that's the big thing. Have projects and, and do that all the time. Invite them in. You, more virtual things where we get to parents that can't be there, but the kids could put it on. It could be the kids putting on a virtual night. And I think then the parents would pick it up. But you know, it is a challenge and it's something that principals have to work on constantly.
Thank you Dr. Brown. And the final respondent to this question will be Brian Butts. Brian, in a normal school year, how could the district expand on parent and community involvement?
Here comes the non-politically correct, I might offend some people, answer. Simple, it's real simple. Be willing to listen to them. That's part of the culture I spoke to earlier. The students, the teachers, the community members, the parents, all feel as though nobody cares what they think. And that is a culture that has been created that we have got to change. I would like to hear from the community. I, I know the board is very rigid in their agendas. I personally would like to open a block of time before an official meeting starts, whether it be 15 minutes, half an hour, whatever, to have community members, parents, teachers, anyone come in and just speak. Tell the board what's on their mind, what are their problems, what's going on. And it doesn't even necessarily have to be within the agenda or handled at that meeting. You know, it could be something that could be added to the agenda for the next meeting.
Run at it. That's, that's great. And because you guys have been cooperative with the time, we actually have time for some bonus questions. So we're going to continue, we're going to continue on. So we'll go back to the original order. So Gail, you'll be the first respondent on this one. Yeah, what do you believe your role as a board member, if you should be elected, would be in regards to teacher management, support and accountability?
As far as teacher management?
Teacher management, support and accountability.
Well, like I said earlier, the board is actually in charge of the superintendent. I don't think it's the board's role to manage teachers or to hold them accountable. So I would, I'm sorry, just let me, I thought I heard, is that you making noises? So I think that, again, I don't think it's appropriate for the, for the school board to be managing teachers. It's, we hire the superintendent who then works and facilitates with the teachers. So I think as long as we hold our superintendent accountable and if we see that there's a culture problem where the community can't speak out, there was actually a board policy that was passed in 2017 where teachers cannot talk to the board. So even if I wanted to, they could be actually retaliated against or penalized for speaking to the board. So when you asked earlier about board policy that I might not support, I, I might not say I don't support this, but I would definitely revisit that policy so then that we can actually have an open conversation with our teachers and, and then also hold our superintendent accountable.
Thank you. Laura, what do you believe your role as a board member would be in regards to teacher management, support and accountability?
Definitely we have a role of support and respecting their years of education and yeah, working within, within the district and working through a chain of command. Teachers can absolutely come talk to me. I've talked to plenty of teachers. I do think there's an expectation that if there's something going on, you know, with what you're doing in the classroom as a teacher, you talk to the building principal, work with your instructional coaches, you know, work with people within your building, collaborate, you know, that type of communication. But I'm, I'm always available to listen to a teacher. And I, you know, I kind of thought recently, if a teacher talks to me, which teachers have, I, the thing I would really want to know is, are you just talking to me just so you, you know, you can add a little piece to my knowledge? And that's great. Or do you want something done? If, if somebody wants something done as a teacher, from my point of view, I would almost, I, I can't think of many situations where I wouldn't probably send them back, you know, to their building administrator to work on that, in that level.
Thank you Laura. Paula, what do you believe your role as a board member would be in regards to teacher management, support and accountability?
Well, I don't feel like the school board's role is teacher management. I feel like their role is support and hiring the superintendent. But I do feel like they should be knowledgeable and open to hear anybody who wants to talk to them and also be visible to be, to know what's going on in the district by, you know, just attending things and, and, and parents knowing who you are and if they want to come up. But I do not feel like our role is teacher manager. I feel like our role is to hire great administrators, starting with the superintendent, and that those administrators are responsible for teacher management.
Brian, what do you believe your role as a board member would be in regards to teacher management, support and accountability?
I don't feel that the board really should have a role in management or accountability. That should fall upon the building administration and even up to the school administration if necessary. I believe that the board should be the biggest supporter of the teachers. I mean, it's, it's pretty simple. You hire great teachers, you do whatever it takes to keep them, you give them the ability to teach and you let them do it.
Thank you Brian. And finally Diane. What do you believe your role as a board member would be in regards to teacher management, support and accountability?
Okay, I've got to agree with everybody up here. My job I would not think would be to manage the teachers. We have a system in place for that. I do believe that you need to support everybody in the system. And I think that that is done by really knowing the issues, hearing all, all kinds of viewpoints and being open to that. Not coming with, you know, judgment on anything, but really looking at the facts and seeing what's going to be best for the whole district. But absolutely not micromanaging down to managing the teachers. That just isn't what we do, I don't believe.
Thank you very much. All right, we do have time for one final question. I believe that means you're going to be the first to go. I believe that means you're going to be the first to go up to bat on this one. So, how does social media impact a school operation and success? What changes could be made in this regard?
Social media and the, just in the community in general?
Sure, you can interpret that however you please.
Well, I think we've had challenges with social media in the community. I think there are times when, you know, things have been misrepresented as far as the school goes. And I think that's unfortunate because it's, that's just tearing down a good school. And I think sometimes it honestly is a time, the times I've seen it happen are really times where, again, you know, if we don't keep that communication open back and forth both ways, meaning that if something happens, you go to the teacher, you go to the administrator. I can think of one time in my daughter's life that I went and talked to a teacher and the, you know, she did everything right and didn't get this one opportunity because of having to get something in late because she had a substitute teacher that day and couldn't take it down to that room that she needed to. I was told the protocol was followed, there was nothing that could be done, I understood. I can't, and I used it as a life lesson for my daughter. Can't imagine if there'd been social media and I had put it on as social media, torn down a good teacher and a good school where really that wasn't necessary. I, going to the teacher and teaching my daughter life skills was more important, I think.
Thank you. Paula Brown. How does social media impact school operation and success? What changes could be made in this regard?
Well, I feel like social media can be constructive or destructive. And to be quite frank, you can almost read too much into it. And with social media, it's a great thing if you use it as a learning tool and a way to teach, you know, teach. But if you, if you're using it as a destructive manner to tear down something that's good, you know, our schools that are, there are, are great schools, just because you have an area that you're concerned about, I would, I would rather them go to the school first and talk to the school, talk to the principals, talk to the teachers. So many times, people just say whatever they think, whatever pops in their head, or whatever they're upset about at the time on social media, and then everyone else can grab onto it. And a lot of times, the facts get twisted and they get turned, and it can be a destructive thing. So it can be used both ways, and I think we have to, to watch for that and be careful of it.
Thank you, Paula. Brian, how does social media impact the school operation and success? What changes could be made in this regard?
Social media impacts everything. The school is not immune. And the net effect, I honestly believe, is a good thing. And there have been times, because it's social media, and like I said, the school is not exempt, that false information has been posted on social media, or something has been posted and it has warped into something that is false or not entirely true. And that's just the nature of social media. I think the way that we can improve that is to understand that it's a good thing that people are using social media as a platform to voice opinions, problems, whatever the case may be, and just be more proactive as far as if somebody posts something that is blatantly false or just a bad assumption, to actually tackle it head on. You know, have somebody go on and say, that's not true, this is what happened, this is what we can say from, you know, a legal standpoint, and go from there.
Thank you, Brian. Diane, how does social media impact the school operation and success? What changes could be made in this regard?
Well, I agree with Brian. It's, it's here, and it's here, you know, to stay. And I will tell you, I think when you think about community involvement, it could be used in a very positive way. It really can. I don't like social media when people hide behind it and are unkind. Unkindness is a real problem for me. It's kind of a hotspot because I don't believe that that we're meant to treat each other that way. So I think that there's positive things. I really like his idea in that you have somebody proactive and going on there when there has been something that's not right, that isn't true, and that that is addressed. I think that would be very important.
And finally, Gail. How does social media impact school operation and success? What changes could be made in this regard?
So I actually was involved in kind of a crowdsourcing event a few years ago, and my kids actually don't know that it was, that I was part of it, so now they're going to know. But I matched funds that were raised by the community for each student in Hawthorne at that time to have one gift per student in both grades on Christmas. And it was a lot of effort, and the teacher who did it is, is amazing. But that all was brewed out of a local community Facebook group. And, you know, he, he was excited, had an idea, and everyone got on board. And to get each student, one gift, it was just a $10 gift, but we were able to get each one thing on their little wish list. And it was a lot of work, but it was really rewarding. So that's something that can be used for good. I will say, yes, social media is here, we have to learn how to be adults and address things on. But I generally think that it comes from lack of communication coming from the school. Usually a parent has had an issue and hasn't had it resolved, or has gone to the school board and it's not resolved, and then they, they go to social media, so.
Thank you, Gail. Right, that concludes our question and answer portion of the evening, and we will now give each candidate an opportunity to make closing statements of up to two minutes. We will go in reverse order of the opening statements. And again, please be aware of the timekeeper. Diane, you were last, so now you're first.
Okay. Thank you all. It's been a real pleasure to be here today and meeting everybody that's here. I think that they've all had really wonderful ideas. Like I said, I think I've tried to represent who I am. I'm at the age where, you know, it is what it is. And I do believe in this community. I love living here at the lake. Our children are a very, very important part of this, and I want to make sure that they have the support they need, the teachers have the support they need, and that we could do good things in this school. So that's what I'm about.
Thank you very much. Our next respondent will be Laura Davis.
Everything we've done up here and everything, you know, just all of us up here, none of it is about any of us. It's all about the students. So I, we've got to get board members on that are for, are for the good of all students, you know, not certain groups, not certain programs, just, and that's, that's a hard place to work. I mean, obviously, I've worked through one of the most challenging years in the history of school ever. And I would say that's not an understatement. And I've taken that responsibility very seriously. I sat, you know, I work in healthcare, I've sat in front of a patient in my, when I'm doing outpatient work, that looked at me and said, masks are ridiculous, what are we doing? I don't like this. And you know what? I understood where they came from. I really, really did. And I've sat across from patients that looked at me and said, this is really scary to me, I have to be very careful. And, and that were, that were very careful and cautious. So what happened in our community this year is, the great thing is, we were able to keep businesses open. And you can do that because with a business, people have a choice of whether they go to that business or not. But in a school, the teachers who have medical issues or the students and families that are scared, they don't have that choice. So what's been so exciting this year is, we exceeded the goals of every school in the country. We kept our businesses open, we had a community that was thriving, and we kept students and teachers and staff safe. And that was my obligation. And, and what's, you know, really interesting is, the board never had to weigh in on it. The teachers and administration could have done it completely on their own. We weighed in to give some teeth and a little bit of help when we had something on the agenda, and that was great. But it's been a hard year, and I think we've come out very, very well. And I'm excited to keep supporting a great district in the decisions, whether they're easy or hard.
Thank you, Laura. Gail Griswold, two minutes is yours.
Well, thank you for letting us speak, and thank you Lake TV and Luke and the chamber. And I agree with Laura that the, the district did the best they could during COVID. It was tough. There were a lot of challenges, and I think overall, everyone did really well, the teachers, the support staff. I know that the food and nutrition department, they were delivering meals during, when it was locked down. And so I just think they did a really great job. I think one thing that could have been done better is the preparedness of the, the new year, the new school year, and communication to families. I know a lot of families were going into the year with anticipating no mask, and then on the second day at 7:00 AM, there was a meeting, and it was not even on the agenda. And next thing you know, it's masks on the move. So I think whether or not the mask was needed is besides the point. It's, it's community involvement, it's talking, you know, understanding what affects people and the community and the board, making better decisions and being more transparent. One of my biggest things that I would like to see is that we are really lacking in a financial officer. We have no financial officer on the school board right now. Not one person that sits on the school board or is a superintendent or administrator has any financial background. And that really concerns me when you're managing a $55 million a year budget. We, we've had issues with mismanagement of funds, and there's been no internal audit since then, and, or even from a third party. So I'm, I'd like to see those, I'd like to see the dollars and a financial officer that can better advise. We have $86 million in debt per Desi's website, and pretty soon, we're going to have a debt service of $9 million in one year. That's principal and interest of $9 million in one year, and we are not prepared for it. And I think we need to get prepared. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Dr. Paula Brown, you have two minutes.
Well, I think the, what I'd like to stress is that I care for Camden Town schools deeply. I've worked in that district, and it's been my life work. And what I care about are the students in this community and this district and doing the best for them. So with that being said, as a school board member, I think that we have to work hard at creating a positive foundation that works together, collaborates. And we have to improve communication. We have to improve listening skills. We have to improve ways to communicate, to get parents in, and work together with our administrators, having parent coffees, our superintendent having a parent coffee. But we've got to do some things that help our stakeholders feel like they're empowered and they're working with us to raise these children and make them viable in our community. And I think that we have one of the best schools in the state of Missouri and have since the time I started 40 years ago, and that we don't want to lose that. We have to keep working towards it. And I think with a, a school board that works together and collaborates, that we will continue to have that, and our children will be walking out those doors and be able to be successful anywhere within the state or the nation. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. And our final candidate, Mr. Brian Butts.
First of all, thank you, guys, for doing this. I really appreciate the opportunity to come in and what an amazing thing, I mean, that our area has cameras and lights and computers, that it's actually broadcasting. I mean, that is just, growing up here, that's just really cool to me. I am extremely proud to have graduated from what I believe to be the best school in the world. I grew up here, have lived here my entire life, with the exception of time in the military and college. And there was zero doubt when I had children that I wanted them to go to this school. That's one of the biggest reasons what brought us back to this area, is because I wanted my kids to graduate from here, just like I did and my parents did and my grandpa did. It really, really is hard for me to admit that the greatest school in the world does have some problems right now. The debt is atrocious, the scores are embarrassing, the culture of teachers and staff walking on age shells is, it's, it's got to go away. We can get back to where we were, but ignoring that we have problems isn't going to get us there. We have to confront these. And that's not being negative, that's not saying, look, this is a horrible school, that's not saying that we have bad teachers, because none of that is true. That is coming from a pride and caring enough to point out those problems, consult experts, because I don't have all the answers, and get these fixed. Thanks, guys.
On behalf of the Lake Area Chamber of Commerce, the Camden Area Chamber of Commerce, Lake TV, we thank all the candidates for joining us. And personally, I feel comforted to know that regardless of the outcome of the election, those seats will be filled with passionate individuals who care deeply about the school, and that comforts my heart. I appreciate that very much. And that concludes our evening tonight. I didn't write this part, so. This, this concludes the school district, oh, you're, we're already off? Oh. This concludes the school district part. We will reset, bring the mayor candidates in, and conclude our evening here at the Lake, at the Camden Area Chamber of Commerce. Ta ta for now.